Good morning. The Kansas State Board of Education is called to order this morning. I noticed that we have nine members present. We have a change to the agenda that I announced yesterday. The transition to college algebra data is not ready yet, and so that needs to be amended. And Denise Kaler is going to talk to us about the training videos for the vision at that time, which is number five on today's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Dina Horst, Kathy Bush.
As amended.
As amended. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Eight, one. Thank you. Information on bi-literacy certificate. We are interested in... Dr. Pizat, you get to talk to us today. They wouldn't let you talk yesterday, but welcome. Welcome to our agency, and we appreciate you being here today to share this information with us.
Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Watson. My name is Regina Pizat. I am the new education program consultant for world languages and English for speakers of other languages. With me today is Julie Ewing.
Hi, I'm the program consultant for Title III ESOL and English for Speakers of Other Languages.
We're happy to have this opportunity to present a progress report to you today on the SEAL of Bili literacy. We would like to begin this update on the SEAL of Bili literacy by quickly restating what it is and how it fits into the board's vision for education in Kansas. The SEAL of Bili literacy recognizes students who have attained proficiency in two world languages by the time they graduate from high school. It is awarded by the Kansas State Department of Education in conjunction with the local school district.
As you may recall, the SEAL of Bili literacy was adopted by the board in May of 2016, and implementation began immediately the following school year. Since the adoption of the SEAL of Bili literacy in Kansas, five other states have also adopted the SEAL, bringing the total to 27 states. As indicated on the map, the states that have adopted the SEAL are depicted in the dark color. The states shown on the map in green are in the process of adopting the SEAL, and those states shown in beige are considering adopting it.
In this pilot year of implementation, nine districts and 199 students participated, and 200 certificates were awarded. One student achieved proficiency in a third language and earned a second certificate. That's the discrepancy in the numbers of students and awards. Pause to let you look at the districts for a moment. We did not expect that all Kansas high schools would be ready to participate in this inaugural year, so we were very pleased to see that districts from all over the state jumped in immediately and were able to get students ready to be certified by the end of the school year, and to have nearly 200 students earn this distinction.
As you can see, districts from many areas of the state participated. We anticipated the number of students earning this certificate will grow with the implementation of the board's vision of individual plans of study. We plan to continue to promote the SEAL of Bili literacy through our professional development events with world language teachers across the state. We expect that through our efforts and those of the Kansas World Language Association, that students, their families, and their school districts will see the benefits of earning this credential that has social, cognitive, and economic benefits. This is the distribution of languages for which certificates were awarded.
Students can earn awards of proficiency at two different levels: platinum for advanced proficiency and gold for intermediate. The SEAL of Bili literacy is a meaningful credential that is attractive not only to potential employers, but to organizations across many sectors, from post-secondary institutions, to all branches of the military, to NGOs or non-governmental organizations whose missions are often to help improve the lives of others through a variety of humanitarian initiatives. The SEAL of Bili literacy on a high school transcript could also potentially be a credential of certification for the hiring of bilingual staff in schools in our own districts. According to our most recent data, 63 intermediate proficiency certificates and 137 advanced proficiency certificates were awarded to seniors graduating this year.
Today's students are the future workforce and future leaders of Kansas. Kansans can achieve anything, and together, Kansans can lead the world in the success of each student. We are happy to have been invited to share this year's results for the SEAL of Bili literacy, and we look forward to reporting on our state's progress in increasing bili literacy amongst our students next year. Thank you very much.
One of the things we heard yesterday was that a lot of places just have two years of foreign language, and that that is not sufficient to achieve the level...
That is correct.
And I remember at the time, I knew this, but I don't know now. Can you update us on what the requirements are to achieve both the gold and the platinum level?
Do you want to answer that? They're going to need at least four years of high school foreign language to achieve the gold.
For the intermediate?
Yes.
So the students, the 130 whatever it was that achieved the platinum, how did they do that?
They started four years ago. There are schools in our state that have four years of foreign language.
Okay.
And those that don't will...
And is there some sort... How do you evaluate proficiency? How is proficiency evaluated?
They are required to take a proficiency assessment in the foreign language and then also in English. And there are several different tests that they can use.
So this is, in fact, a high-stakes, difficult process.
Very much so.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. Really reporting on kids that are already in the system, you know, and that's a great report. Hopefully, this will motivate or encourage or create interest for students to proceed forward. Do you have any idea how many schools in the state actually have foreign language in their curriculum, and how many have more than two years? Any kind of data like that?
I'm sure we have that data.
Someplace.
I don't have it right now, so I can give that to Randy.
Yeah, it would be interesting to find out.
It would be.
That's one of the things that I intend to do soon as well, is to get updated information on that.
Sure. Good. Well, I just returned from a trip to Europe, and as an educator, you know, we talk about education. And it was fascinating to me that in each of the countries, that students typically not only have, are starting at kindergarten, but they're, by the time they finish school, they're typically their native language or a variation of their native language, and then English, and then another language. But the big thing to me, and this is a great program that we're starting here, is that they start in kindergarten. They start right away. Now, it's not immersion in a home, but they start right away, and there's an expectation that they're going to know it, you know, by third and fourth grade, they're going to... It was shocking. So with the little group I was with, about 180 people on a little tour, okay, I think there was only two people that were conversant in another language, but everybody we talked to seemed to know our language. You know, it's a cultural thing. We have to change the culture. But on the other hand, as a high school principal, it was very difficult and challenging to find teachers. We stopped teaching German because we couldn't find anybody to teach German. You know, the German teacher left. Left. What do you mean you left? And French was another one. And then to really have four years of Spanish, you know, was very expensive in terms of how we run school. And it also, students had to make choices to stay in a foreign language that took them away from other opportunities. For instance, I know in foreign language, especially the third and fourth year, band and instrumental music got in the way, an orchestra. You know, they were typically in conflicts. You know, we have a lot more choices. So this is a great start, but we need to do a whole lot more in terms of elevating and promoting foreign language, you know, in our country, but first in our local schools and our state, but in our country as well. But thank you for doing this. It's a great program, and I look forward to seeing those numbers growing each year, you know, as we put this in their transcript and make a big deal of it at graduation and other, you know, celebrations as they graduate. Gives them incentive to be there. So thank you very much, and thank you to the board for passing this.
Thank you.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and yeah, thank you for the report, but what are you doing to get information out to everybody about this program? Because I do know we have a few schools throughout the state, I don't think it's too many, that have either bilingual or dual-language programs starting in elementary. But just as far as making sure that districts know about the opportunity for the SEAL for bili literacy, what are you guys doing?
Well, we started last year as soon as you implemented, had adopted the SEAL of Bili literacy, and presented at the leadership conference in Wichita, the annual conference last year in Wichita. We also presented at the, shared that at the Impact Institute over the summer. We do webinars for EL directors, for world language. So we're trying to, and I know we can always do more, but that's where we've started.
Okay, all right. Well, I think it's a very positive thing. We just need to make sure people know, and as I'm sure there's probably, hopefully, as Jim said, it'll grow, because I'm sure there's a lot of students out there that could qualify.
Absolutely.
And I'll mention it this afternoon at the council superintendent's. I had no look and go, what? I do that on every... You sure it's not the presentation?
Yeah, no, it's me. What language are you doing in? Yes, my language. Do we know how many districts or schools we have that are truly dual-language? I know we had yesterday, you know, we had one here in Topeka, or two here in Topeka. I know we've got one in Wichita, but I know we've got a Chinese immersion opening in Blue Valley. So do we have an idea? Do we know that number?
It's a handful that I'm going to turn to Phyllis.
Welcome, Phyllis. Phyllis just thought she was retiring like Sandy yesterday. We don't let them retire.
It's exactly that, a handful. We can get a...
It's those three that you named.
Right. Okay, okay.
Actually, that's not quite true. There is a liberal school that has a model.
And would it be safe to say that if we really tried to scale that very quickly? Let's say we went from three or four to 15 in a year, we'd have a capacity issue?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we would need to really plan the growth and really think through it and how we would do it.
Yes.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to echo the sentiments from my colleagues from Wichita on how wonderful the potential is for this. My question is, is it about us or is it about our students? And I want to frame it this way. If a Chinese student, for example, came to this country at a middle school level, age 13, and was absolutely fluent in English and Chinese, Mandarin or Cantonese, either one, would they be eligible to test for the bili literacy SEAL, or would they have to do the work for us before they'd be eligible?
The guidelines show that they can test, and there's no extra work. They wouldn't have to go through foreign language classes, if that's what you're asking.
So it really is about the student? If they have mastered it by any...
Correct.
Method?
They do not have to take a class in high school.
That gratifies me very, very much. Thank you.
Dina.
I wanted to clarify whether students needed to... You were talking about four years in a language or in languages. So is, can they be in multiple languages, or is it just one to be able to test?
Absolutely not. They can take as many languages as they'd like to. And we had one student this year that actually was proficient in English and then two other world languages, and she was able to have two SEALs.
Okay.
Or if the...
So it's...
That spoke Chinese came in and wanted to learn, and learned English and wanted to learn another language, that is absolutely possible.
Well...
Because size the limit for our students.
And I concur with what Jim McNeese was saying earlier. When I've traveled to a foreign country, it's amazing how many individuals speak English, and they speak it well enough that you're not sure that they're not, that they didn't just move from this country to wherever it was, because they sounded like they lived here. And I'm talking about Midwest Kansas. So I think we're way, when we look at the model of what European countries have done, we're way behind the wherever, but we're behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, this is not the right time to say this, but sometime in the future, we, I would think that it would be interesting for us to actually have presentations for some of those students who have been successful in this program and get the student perspective. So we'll look to that in the future. Mr. Willard.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday I spoke to this, and I would just like to repeat that I'd like to know what efforts are being made to expand the number of countries from which we're bringing teachers besides Spain and China. We all think this is really important, but I would just like to know what barriers there are to expanding it, and if there's anything we can do to knock them down. So this just speaks again to, if we have kids who want to teach German and we can't bring in German teachers, that makes it pretty difficult. So I'd like to report on that as soon as it's reasonable. Thank you.
And I concur. That'd be interesting to know, you know, what those barriers are, because I asked the same question, not as long as you have been asking it, but I've been asking that question. And it just seems, if we can provide better opportunities, we need to do that. Mrs. Cobble.
Thank you. On your map with the gold stars, they don't go far enough west. And I know there's a lot of proficiency in two languages out there. So if the teachers in some of those areas that do not have gold stars know that their students are proficient, do they go on the website of the department, and can they type in world languages to get the information they need about... Is that how they do it?
And actually, it's under, if you look on our website...
Speak into the microphone, please. We're talking to the world.
Oh, it's under bili literacy?
Yes. And that, we have our, oh, I'm sorry. We have our SEAL of Bili literacy guidelines. Everything is on that page under bili literacy.
Okay, so they would log on to kste.org, and then they would look for bili literacy?
Yes. At the top, we have that index, the A through Z, and if you click on B, you'll get the bili literacy.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you. This is just kind of a follow-up question. You said they sit for an exam for the SEAL for bili literacy?
Correct.
And I'm assuming, but clarify for us, because we have a lot of students that speak two languages. We have a lot of parents that speak two languages, but I'm assuming for the SEAL, they probably have to have more than a speaking knowledge, they probably have to have other knowledge. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, they have to be proficient in not only speaking, but listening, reading, and writing.
Okay.
In all those four domains.
Okay, which then necessitates for some students some additional work.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, so thank you for your presentation. Very interesting. Look forward to a follow-up.
Thank you very much.
McNeese, it's all yours.
She's excited.
That's really good work.
Pony shirt.
Not me on a skateboard.
Well, that was pretty good. That was pretty good. All right. Well, good morning, just very quickly. Obviously, I'm not here to talk about algebra, because I barely passed algebra, so thanks for that. We're here to talk about the vision training modules that my staff worked with Division Learning Services to put together. And we, Brad was talking about how he wanted to put some things together, video together. I said, hey, can our team, we'd like a chance at it. Can we have a shot at this? And he was kind enough to let us have a shot at it. So really, the whole premise behind this is we wanted to have something that gave districts and school leaders and help with how do they have these conversations with their staff? If they don't feel like they're really clear on everything, can we help provide them a little bit of an overview to just start the discussion? So that's the purpose of these. It's a very high-level look. They're short in duration, about six to eight minutes. We try to make them engaging, and the goal then at the very end is that we would provide the districts in building leadership with some guiding questions to help them talk with their staff about what these outcomes might look like in their schools. So our goal was, we developed, and you'll see how we've got these organized, I believe that's seven modules that we've developed, and they can be used as a whole or in part. So you're going to see them together like this, and then we'll break them out. So if a district only has a short amount of time for professional development, they may want to choose to do one of these a month or something, so, or they have the opportunity to build maybe a half-day training session on these. So I'm just going to show you real fast. I have a couple teed up that I want to show you, and then we'll go from there. So this is our first one, and it's on social, emotional growth.
Hello, and welcome to the module on social, emotional growth. Since the day the first schoolhouse was established in Kansas, the focus has been on teaching students reading, writing, and arithmetic, skills identified as being the most critical to a person's long-term success. Under the No Child Left Behind Act enacted in 2001, that focus became even more laser-sharp as schools were measured by the number of students earning at least a proficient rating on standardized state assessment. Education became caught up in the practice of teaching to the test at the expense of the students' needs, particularly the social, emotional needs of students. Addressing these needs has reached a critical point. Today, students experiencing poverty, chronic absenteeism, mental health disorders, and a lack of parent engagement have become the norm rather than the exception. Identified as a key outcome of the Kansas State Board of Education's vision for education, social, emotional learning is the process through which students and adults acquire the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, make responsible decisions. Research shows schools that incorporate social, emotional, and character development have more student engagement, decrease suspensions, and improve academic outcomes. In 2012, Kansas became the first state to develop and adopt social, emotional, and character development standards, also known as SECD. The standards provide schools a framework for integrating social, emotional learning with character development so that students will learn, practice, and model essential personal life habits that contribute to academic, vocational, and personal success. The process of updating and revising these standards will occur in 2017 through 2018. Character development, personal skills development, and social development are separate strands within the standards and are interdependent upon each other. Within character development, the standards focus on core principles, responsible decision-making, and effective problem-solving. Within personal skills development, there's a focus on self-awareness and self-management. And under social development, the standards focus on developing social awareness and interpersonal skills. When the State Board of Education selected social, emotional growth as a key outcome to its vision, it was very clear that this is to be measured locally by schools, not by the state, and the data collected should be used to inform decisions and instruction. So how do you measure social, emotional growth? There are several types of data collection and school improvement processes that could be applied to this outcome. Let's start by identifying the types of data you could collect. Perception data, such as surveys. Process data, such as numbers served. Outcome data, what did you prove? Multiple measures, used when conducting assessments. Tiered approach. In Kansas, some districts utilize multi-tiered system of supports integrated framework as an implementation model. Evidence-based curriculum. Regardless of the type of improvement effort, any curriculum and instructional strategies need to be evidence-based. Now, let's take a look at the indicators that can be measured. Chances are, you may already be addressing many of these. Attitude and behavior, which is perception data collected through the Kansas Discipline Incident System, also known as the CANDIS system. Climate student management, such as measuring suspensions, expulsions, bullying incidents, as well as student, staff, family survey data. Attendance and program completion, which is data from the Kansas Individual Data on Students. Bullying prevention, bullying data collected. Character development, perception data. School-based mental health, referral data. Volunteerism service learning, number of students involved. Prevention data. Prevention curriculum outcome data. The Kansas State Department of Education created a toolkit designed to help districts measure SECD locally. It contains the SECD fact sheet, Data 101 document, examples of the types of SECD measurement, including the communities that care depression scale, examples of curriculum measurement, including Duckworth's Grit, Safe and Civil Schools, Sephs of Respect, Second Step, and the Kansans Can Competencies. Also included is a crosswalk between the SECD standards and the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, or KISA, four Rs and results. KSTE provides guidance and support for local implementation in many ways. High-quality professional learning with supporting resources and materials are produced and made available at low or no cost on several initiatives. One of these initiatives is the Kansans Can Competency Framework, developed by the University of Kansas's Center for Research on Learning. This framework supports educators in systematically embedding interpersonal, interpersonal, and cognitive competencies into coursework. While academics are and will always be critical, they alone won't guarantee a student's success. Without skills such as the ability to persevere, communicate effectively, and take personal responsibility for behaviors and actions, students will struggle in their post-secondary pursuits. We're all familiar with the phrase, "Do as I say, not as I do." As educators, that's not good enough. As educators, that's not good enough. We must be careful to model the behaviors we want our students to learn. Your school team can assess to what degree the Kansas S E C D standards are incorporated into daily instruction and various school routines. School counselors, social workers, and school psychologists can also offer insights, unique skill sets, and resources. When educators nurture students' intellectual, emotional, and civic potential, Kansas students are on a sure path to post-secondary success as socially engaged, career-equipped, lifelong learners. For more information on social-emotional growth, visit the K S D website at www.kste.org. Thank you for your time and attention to this module on social-emotional growth.
So, you have a question?
Can we get these on YouTube or can we get them on our site?
So when we have these completed, they're going to be available on the Kansans Can webpage on our website under "We'll Have Training Materials," and we're also going to have them posted on the Building Report Card site in the upper quadrants where we've got each of the outcomes listed. It currently has a video of Randy, and we're going to replace him with each of the videos per that module, and we'll give links to that. Sorry about that, Randy. Do we have time to see one more? Okay, so I'm just going to show you one more that's available, and this one's on the post-secondary completion. This one was a little bit more in-depth, I'm sorry.
Do you have the report card that you could just show them where it is?
I could sure give it a whirl here, where it will be when we have them ready to go. So when you come to the homepage and you hit Data Central, we come into Data Central, and we click on Kansas State Building Report Card. And let me put in, okay. Oh, you are? Excellent. All right, so right here where we have graduation, you see graduation, individual plans of study, kindergarten readiness. So right now, you would find a video of Randy, who is a wonderful speaker, but we're going to retire him from this for now. Sorry, Randy, you did a great job. So each of those modules will be linked here as well. So we'll have multiple sites where they can have them. We'll also be, we'll also be working with Brad and his staff to get these out to all of our districts and promote them out through ListServes and whatnot. And we've got, already have staff that are prepared to use these in trainings that they're going to be promoting or providing to the field as well, so.
Before you go into the next one, Steve has a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the right time, but I would like to participate actively in making the public aware of the need to stop when the school bus signs are out and the lights are flashing. We talked about it last month, I believe it was. I would volunteer, if it would please the board, to help produce or help be a part of a video to that end, if an eight-minute video for that issue would be effective. I would love to step up and help with that.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, well, let me show you this one on post-secondary completion.
Hello, and welcome to the module on post-secondary attendance and completion. High school graduation is a huge milestone for Kansas students. However, it shouldn't be the finish line. Instead, it should just be the beginning. A study conducted by the Georgetown Center for Education and the workforce looked at job growth and workplace education requirements. The study predicts that by the year 2020, 71% of the jobs in Kansas will require some additional form of education after high school. That's six percentage points above the predicted national average. Of that 71%, approximately 36% will require a bachelor's or master's degree, and 35% will require a two-years associate's degree or vocational certificate. Students graduating high school without earning the necessary workforce requirements will find it difficult at best to ever reach the middle class. The results of this study, combined with the input from statewide community conversations, convinced the Kansas State Board of Education that greater focus needs to be placed on post-secondary attendance and completion. Before we can ensure the Kansas workforce pipeline is well-supplied with talent, we first have to ensure students graduate high school. But it's not enough to simply graduate students. We have to graduate students who are academically and cognitively prepared, who have technical skills and employability skills, and who are civically engaged in order to be successful in their post-secondary pursuits. That's a responsibility shared by every teacher, kindergarten through high school. You're probably thinking, "We're a K-12 education. What does post-secondary education have to do with us?" Everything. When you think about it, every piece of the board's vision for education, social-emotional growth, kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study, civic engagement, and graduation is leading us to this destination of post-secondary attendance and completion. Each outcome leads to the next. We also know that between 70 and 75% of all Kansas graduates must complete some level of post-secondary education, whether that's a four-year degree, two-year degree, certification program, or entering the military in order to meet Kansas's workforce needs by 2020. So how do we know if we're graduating students with the skills needed to be successful after graduation? We'll start by monitoring what our students do two years after high school graduation. Most post-secondary institutions, such as colleges, community colleges, and technical schools, submit their student enrollment data to the National Student Clearinghouse, or NSC for short. This data includes high school graduates that attend both in-state and out-of-state schools and follows them for six years. Using this data, schools will be able to measure the percentage of their high school graduates who have entered into some form of post-secondary education the first year out of high school, the percent who were retained in a post-secondary education program the second year, and the percent who graduated from a post-secondary program during that time. When at least 70% of Kansas students achieve any of those three milestones the first two years after graduation, the K-12 education system will have met its goal. NSC data does have its limitations, though, and that's where schools will have to fill in the blanks. For instance, the Clearinghouse data is not able to account for certificates students earn while still in high school, does not account for dual-colors credit students earn while in high school. NSC data only represents student post-secondary enrollment after high school graduation. It also doesn't track non-degree-seeking students, students who earn a GED, or students who enlist in the military. For these reasons, districts may need to adjust their database on what they know about their graduates. For example, districts will know which graduates enter the military, those who earn an industry-recognized certification while still in high school, and those who enter the workforce directly after graduation. Let's take a look at the types of reports districts are able to view online on the Kansas State Department of Education website using the National Student Clearinghouse data. This first chart provides data that is only reported to districts and enables them to follow a single graduating class over a six-year period. Each segment of the bar chart represents the following. Graduated, meaning a student has completed an associate's, bachelor's, or higher degree. Certificates earned in high school aren't included. New to college, retained in a post-secondary program. Returned after stop-out. The student was enrolled in a post-secondary program their first year, didn't appear in the Clearinghouse enrollment database the following year, but reappeared the year thereafter. No longer enrolled and not graduated. The student was enrolled in post-secondary education but currently isn't, and there is no record in the Clearinghouse database of the individual having graduated from a program. Not an NSC to date. The student wasn't found in the Clearinghouse database. This could be the result of the post-secondary institution not participating in NSC reporting, or the student opting out of reporting. Institutions that report to the Clearinghouse represent more than 97% of the nation's two- and four-year post-secondary enrollment. The green area of this chart represents the percent of, in this case, the class of 2010 graduates who went on to post-secondary education. Remember, Kansas needs at least 70 to 75% of its high school graduates to earn some level of post-secondary education in order to fill its workforce demand. Let's look at this class six years after graduation. Just 39.6% of these Kansas graduates have completed a post-secondary degree or credential, clearly not enough to fill the available jobs in Kansas. The Kansas State Department of Education then created a second report that provides districts with a five-year average of their graduation rates, post-secondary success rates, post-secondary effective rates, and predicted effectiveness rate. The graduation rate is the four-year adjusted cohort, which is the number of students who graduated in four years with a regular high school diploma divided by the number of students who entered high school as a ninth grader four years earlier, adjusting for transfers in and out. The post-secondary success rate is the percent of high school graduates that have met one of the following outcomes within two years after high school graduation. Earn an industry-recognized certification while in high school, earn a post-secondary certification, earn a post-secondary degree, or is enrolled in a post-secondary program in both the first and second year following high school graduation. The post-secondary effective rate is the calculated graduation rate multiplied by the calculated success rate. The effective rate factors in all students, those who did and didn't graduate high school, whereas the success rate only factors in those students who graduated high school. The goal for Kansas is to have an effective rate of 70 to 75% in order to meet the needs of the Kansas workforce. Factoring in the uniqueness of every school district, K S D researchers developed what is called a predicted effectiveness rate. Research shows that there are several factors that influence student success, both positively and negatively. Negative influences, commonly referred to as risk factors, are present in every district. What's different is the degree to which these risk factors are present. What may be heavily influencing student success in one district may not be a factor for another. K S D focused on seven student risk factors to which a weighting system was applied. They are cumulative poverty, chronic absenteeism, suspension and expulsion, mobility, ELL population, disabled student population, percent of new teachers. Based on the district's unique student population and the presence of these seven risk factors, K S D researchers were able to calculate a predicted range of what the district's five-year average post-secondary effectiveness rate should be. This provides a baseline measurement from which districts can determine whether they are meeting, exceeding, or falling short of predicted post-secondary effectiveness rates. Districts will also receive individual student data from NSC and should use this data to begin asking themselves questions about the types of experiences the students had while in their school district and how those experiences prepared them for success after high school, helping them determine if adjustments need to be made. Today's students are the future workforce and future leaders of Kansas. As Kansas educators, it's our job to make sure they're well-prepared with the academic and non-academic skills needed to be successful after graduation. Not every job requires a student to earn a four-year degree, but every student must have a plan for earning the education requirements necessary to participate in Kansas's workforce.
All right, so that gives you the flavor of the series that we've created, and I want to give you some acknowledgement to the folks that worked on this. Dana Shob, right here, stand up, Dana. The Golden Voice. He's with our ESAPZ team, and Dana did all of the voiceover work for us, and we appreciate him very much. He's amazing. So it's our little agency-hidden talent that now the world's going to know and probably steal from us. And then I want to recognize Ann Bush, and I'm not sure that I've ever introduced Amanda Manville to you all. Amanda's the newest member of our communications staff. But Amanda and Ann are the ones who did all of the animation graphic work, and Ann put everything together into the videos. So they really, when we first talked about this, they looked at me and said, "Are you nuts?" And I said, "I know we can do this. I know we can do this." And they absolutely rose to it, and so I want to personally thank each of them for all the work on this because they've done an amazing job. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, Denise, and team. We appreciate the good work you've done. Now, we are going to have a presentation on NASB, presented by the distinguished former Chair of NASB, Mr. McNeese.
First of all, Kansas has a long history of participation, engagement, and leadership with NASB since the 1950s, and the member services that we're provided, many of you are aware of. You receive information in the standard, you know, the publication. We've received help and service in terms of some of the issues and topics we've looked into. NASB's always upgraded, and one of the things that you may not know is they track what we talk about across the nation. And if you go to the NASB site, you can find information about the topics and issues that state boards are facing in our country, and we're very consistent. It's not like a big surprise, you know, assessments, accountability, financing are all topics, but you can then go and find out what other states are doing. And many times when I do this, I find out that we're a step ahead, but sometimes I find out that there's things I can learn and bring back to us. So I'd encourage you to use the NASB website to find information that can serve you individually as a board member and we collectively as a board. One of the major options that, one of the major things that we do is we provide actually three main conferences, which we're all aware of, each year. The New Member Conference, which Ann participated in this past year, is a great opportunity. Many of you have participated in it, as I have, to bring us and learn the services and benefits belonging to NASB, but more importantly, helping us be board members, you know, and prepare for our roles as board members, as new board members. But I have to also say that we also have the opportunity, when we're there, to meet other people and network. And one of the things that I value the most from my experience from the new member through leadership positions has been getting to know members around the country. I have a number of resources that are just a phone call or an email away that I have, but I've developed some really, some great friends around the country, whether they be in Georgia, Maine, Missouri, yes, Missouri, or Washington, the state of Washington. And that's great. It's a place that we can go and commiserate and develop those lifelong friendships. The second major event that we put on each year as NASB is the Legislative Conference, and the Legislative Conference has improved every year. Being able to talk to and converse as an organization about the national perspectives is important, but NASB also represents us and played an essential role in the passage of E S S A two years ago. The last several years, we've had the Secretary of Education before us, as well as staffers and assistant secretaries, and that has been of great consequence for us to have that voice. You know, the other conference which is coming up here in November, the NASB Annual Conference, the theme this year is "Moving Beyond the State Plan." The state plan, obviously, is the E S S A state plan, and I have to say that Kansas has played a role both in the last, especially in the last two conferences. Obviously, last year, we had the conference in Kansas City, and that was considered one of the best conferences we've had and was a challenge to the Atlanta and Georgia folks in the south part of our great nation to come up with a conference that could compete with or even go beyond. I would call a couple of things to your attention that will be happening at the national conference this year. First of all, and this is to our Georgia friends, there will be a welcome reception at the Governor's Mansion hosted by the Governor of Georgia on the first night, on Wednesday night. It's a members-only and open to registered attendees. There will be no guests at it in terms of spouses or others that you may bring, but if you're registered for it, that's an exciting opportunity. I do appreciate last year that Senator Brownback, Senator, excuse me, Governor Brownback came to the conference and was present when we awarded Ken, recognized Ken at our conference. That's always a plus. I tell you also, another big highlight, and probably the highlight for me of this conference is going to be, we'll be recognizing Security Benefit on November 2nd as a friend of education. There were a number of, there were some good competition for that, and Security Benefit is being recognized for sponsoring and promoting the teachers of our state through the Teacher of the Year program. Over half a million dollars has been presented. We couldn't do it the way we do it if it wasn't for Security Benefit. We couldn't do it the way we do it if it wasn't for Security Benefit, you know. And the seventeen hundred to two thousand educators that we've recognized over the years as being outstanding educators and the Teachers of the Year themselves is recognized as one of the best, if not the best, Teacher of the Year Program in the United States. So we'll be recognizing them at the luncheon on November 2nd. I think that's going to be great. Security Benefits will be present to receive that award. I'll be meeting with them today on details relative to November 2nd and can report back to you later the final details of how or who is going to be there and how we're going to do that. Also, if you, you don't have the agenda, but you can go online and get the conference agenda. Throughout the conference agenda, there are assessments on rethinking high school, elementary school, innovation, setting the excellence in early childhood education, interventions for our most vulnerable students, personalized learning, bold ideas and interesting innovations as a result across the country from ESSA that are there, going to be presented. The conference is focusing on the future and on innovation. That sounds familiar. We are certainly a role model for them and a resource, but there are also resources to be had. One of the main speakers that we have coming this year is Sal Khan from Khan Academy. And I think that's going to be a real opportunity to hear from some, one of our major innovators in the country. So we have great speakers. Again, last year, the conference was kicked off by Manny Scott. And if you were there, you know just how powerful that was and what a great speaker he's going to be on Friday of our conference in Wichita coming up here in November or October, excuse me. And so the conference is really relevant to what we're doing, the work we're doing right now. And I think NASB has become more relevant in the work that they're doing in support of us. So that's kind of my report, NASB and an overview. I'm open for questions and we have a couple of other tasks that we need to do here in terms of NASB dues and delegate representatives. So any questions?
I do know that I was in the Government Affairs Committee in DC and one of the staff members was telling me about how she always listened to us. So evidently, hello NASB, there's somebody must be there.
They are, yes, they are listening. Our efforts, Randy has spoken at the conference last year, and our focus on redesign on Kansas Ken and the initiatives that we're undertaking have received a lot of national attention. And I think that's great. I get a lot of questions from people around the country about what we're doing and the direction we're going. And how did you do that? Yes, Ann?
Yeah, I'm probably not going to go this year to the National Conference, but I'd be interested in getting the materials from the high school innovation session, that one and the elementary too, both looked really.
I'll make sure we bring back information to share with you and the other board members on the redesign and innovation that they're looking at, you know. If you look at the conference agenda, it mirrors our outcomes, you know. So I think that's a real compliment to us, you know. So yes, other questions?
Yeah, two quick things. One, Sal Khan is terrific and he presented at the Foundation for Excellence in Education last year. And the point he made that we want to share is that when we hold students to this level of, say, seventy percent proficiency before they move on, that's cumulative. So if you have a first grader, for example, with seventy percent and they go into second grade and they get seventy percent there, now you're at forty-nine percent. So, you know, why don't we insist on mastery before we move kids along? That's something that he speaks to and I wish we could have done more with that for our math standards. The other question I have is procedural, it's not necessarily for you, Jim, but it's to anyone who has the answer. I should know the answer to this and I apologize, being in my fifth year on this board. When we travel, does salary come out of our travel budget? When we travel and we get salary, does it come out of our travel budget?
Yes, except for board meetings. Board meetings, travel, salary and per diem is all out of the board pot. And any other travel, including salary, comes out of your salary pot.
Very good, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's what I thought, but I wanted to confirm it. Thank you.
One of the things I failed to share with you, that's good clarification, I had asked that question several times. But on a distinctly different thing is I failed to mention that NASB has changed in the five years that I've been participating. First, in some very subtle ways, they changed the name of the leader position. I was the president of NASB. I was the last president of NASB. And now the Chair of NASB, I was then the Chair of NASB for about an hour and a half before the Chair-elect took over. That was just, it's a subtle change, but it was communicating to other agencies and departments that we communicate with and network with, that, just a name change. But more importantly, there have been substantive changes in the political area in terms of what the GAC Committee does and there's been subtle changes to the bylaws. But the most significant change has been in five years, I don't think there's really, and Ken, you could talk to this too, I think the entire NASB staff has changed. And there are fewer of them and they're more efficient. You know, there's also a significant use of interns, which are all over Washington, which was a new change in terms of how many we have, and they do great work. And NASB has national voice and voice at the table with the other groups like CCSO, the National Teachers Group, the different groups that are there. NASB is regarded as a player. Now, there's been real substantive changes. I'm serving now on a committee that is looking at dues, restructuring NASB's organization. Chris Ammison, our President and CEO, is forever pushing us to improve and to be very effective and a strong voice for state boards of education. You know, so, Mr. Chairman, that's my report unless there's other questions.
I see no other questions. If you'll bring to your attention item 6B on our agenda, which is the Act on the Payment of the NASB Membership Dues for 2018, a motion, proposed motion would be in order at this Ken and Sally. Further discussion? In favor, raise your hand. All opposed, nine zero. And now it is, our next item of business is to appoint a person to be our delegate. How many of you plan on going to NASB? Dana, Ken, Jeremy. I've asked, since Jim has a leadership position, I'd ask him if he was interested and he is not in the position, doesn't feel right, you don't feel like you're in the position to be the delegate?
No, I'll be busy.
So, you know, one of the rest of us needed to, go ahead Jim.
I would like to nominate Gina Horst to be our delegate at the Delegate Assembly and Mr. Willard to be our alternate.
Okay. Is there a second? Kathy seconds that. Any discussion? In favor, raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Adalia, are you here? Are you in a terrible hurry?
No.
Let's take a ten-minute break.
Did I give you a problem?
And Adalia, who's going to talk to us about the A&amp;E Teacher Leadership Institute. Welcome.
My name is Adalia Schuman, Director of Teaching and Learning with Kansas National Education Association, and it's an honor to be here with you today. We wanted to share with you our new Teacher Leadership Institute that we launched in February of 2018. And to present our program, I have two of our coaches with us, Julie Doian, National Board Certified Teacher from Manhattan, Library Media Specialist. And our second coach is Linda Henderson from Nickerson, Middle School Science Teacher. So I'm going to turn it over to them, but I just wanted to briefly mention, like you, we have our vision and our mission that we attend to. And the vision for us is to cultivate and activate teachers as leaders who transform the teaching profession in the best interest of students. And within that as well, our mission is driven to really to create a nation where there's a network of teachers, leaders that are prepared to transform instructional practice, educational policy, and ACT Education Association. So thank you.
Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here today talking about something we're very passionate about. For about the last decade in Kansas, we've been talking about the oncoming shortage of quality educators in our classroom. It's been at the top of a lot of our educational communities and wanting to address that. As I said on the Blue Ribbon Task Force a few years ago and those recommendations that came out of that, there were two things that really jumped out and grabbed me. One was that the new teachers, what they, we learned through that research and understanding and talking to them even just firsthand was sometimes they've gone to college, you put them in a classroom, they're there by themselves, they're doing the best they can with the knowledge that they have, but if someone could reach out or they had even simple questions, I remember going to a new building just a few years ago and thinking, how do I get a paperclip in this joint? And so their need and their desire and their wish to be the best educators they could be, but they need help and where do you go to get that? We had mentoring programs in our schools, but a true concentrated effort to really reach out like those teachers did for me when I started my career three decades ago. The other group of teachers that we were very concerned about were the experienced teachers that were leaving the classrooms. You know, you just can't buy experience. Working day-to-day with students and encountering a plethora of activities and ideas and situations helps you to increase your ability to deal with those the best that you can. And we're dealing with the best product of Kansas too. As you look at this information, you see in eighty-seven, there were fifteen years of experience was the common for the classroom. In two thousand eight, it was the first year beginner was the most common. We need more to keep those teachers in classrooms and what can we do to do that?
I'd also like to point out that the maker of that slide is going to be the keynote speaker at the Retention Summit in November. Let's see, his name is Mr. Engersol, yes.
Also, the Teacher Leader Institute, as a person, we all have to say, what are we going to do to help our profession? As I had been the president of the National Board Teachers of Kansas, I thought, what are we going to do? What legacy are we going to leave on education for the kids that are coming behind us? Well, the NEA partnered with the Center for Teacher Quality and National Board Professional Teaching Standards and came up with, developed the curriculum of the Teacher Leadership Institute. It has been in progress now for four years. It has, it is a year-long cohort-based learning experience consisting of rigorous competency-based curriculum, applied experience through a self-selected capstone project, deep local and national community collaboration, extensive coaching and support, an evidence-based portfolio and micro credentials documenting growth and leadership competencies. So it's some good stuff.
This next slide shows the compelling needs and opportunities for teacher leaders. Besides just mentoring that new teacher, we're trying to develop teacher leaders that can go out into the community, that can serve other functions in our school districts and in our schools besides just being that classroom mentor for that new teacher. YTLI.
There are three main reasons as we looked at the TLI project, we thought there's autonomy, mastery, and purpose. What does that mean? Autonomy generates initiative on the part of teachers. It provides a greater autonomy for teachers and it also fosters classroom practices that encourage student motivation and autonomy. Mastery, through the recognition of the mastery of being a teacher leader, show not just by title, but by respect and trust and opportunities. The teacher leader is driven to greater excellence as a professional. And then teacher leaders see the mission for positive impact, including their classrooms, their students, and then the transition to include supporting colleagues, becoming change agents in the school culture, advocates for students and learning. They embrace the sense of their purpose. Just like in Kansas, we've been embracing a new accreditation cycle, KISA. The basis for the TLI falls right with what we're doing, the initiative, the forward-thinking of the Kansas Education Accreditation System. So what a nice match to have an opportunity to use TLI, that's why.
So where do our teacher leaders come from? You can't create a position, it's not a job title. They're in our buildings right now, they're in our districts working right now, and you would not believe the phenomenal twenty fellows that we have selected out of the state of Kansas, two of which have been chosen for the Teacher of the Year. Bradley Weaver is a music teacher from Atchison, Kansas, and Gilbert Stiles is a fourth-grade teacher from Dodge City. So this is what the TLI program looks like, and I believe you have the packet with you that has all the policies and the competencies. To accomplish this mission, a teacher leader needs knowledge, skills, and a positive attitude for success. Each fellow wrote their own mission statement, and we did too as well, which they have continued to use as our guide throughout for reflection. In fact, Bradley Weaver, one of the finalists for Teacher of the Year, mentioned that he used his mission statement while he developed in the TLI program for his guidance for professional reflection on his application. So let's look at the competencies. This is the focus, the logo for TLI. And in the upper left-hand corner, you see the skills base that our fellows have been working on, the overarching competencies, reflective practices, personal effectiveness and so on. There's eight competencies. Our fellows are amazing. They already exhibit a lot of these skills, but we asked them to choose two areas, two competencies, where they felt like they could have the most growth. And those are the two competencies that they will continue to work on throughout their TLI focus. Then towards the end, the second semester, which we're starting now, the fellows are being asked to narrow down their skills and exhibit their skills and demonstrate their growth, choosing three pathways, the pathways of instructional, classroom instruction, the pathway of institutional policies, or the pathway of association leadership.
As we looked at the TLI competencies, what I liked is the integration of our new accreditation system and what we do in Kansas. We talk about, if you're looking through the needs assessment in the KISA process, you see collaboration, communication, technology, and those same things are in this process. So it fits nicely with what's not only going on in Kansas, but in the nation with quality education. We, if you look at those needs assessment in the KISA, you will see it's a rubric and schools and districts are looking at themselves compared to what we have found in the last twenty-five years of when we had QPA in Kansas and the knowledge we gained through that process. So they set and look at themselves on a variety of measures, just like our TLI fellows. For example, am I emerging in this particular area? Am I developing? Am I performing or am I transforming? Very similar to what we're trying to do with our schools. So why not have teachers from within, learning those skills and also integrating with what we're trying to do across the state to make leaders in the world, the leading students in the world? So the nice connection between this and developing what their needs are in their building, we have local control in Kansas, we know what our students need. And so this feeds right into them, the teachers, based on their experiences, their students, their population, and their own professional growth needs, what do they want to work on to perfect or improve in their building? One thing in the 21st century and a global society, especially in rural America, here in Kansas, we have some places, I work in a school with twenty-seven different languages spoken in the classroom, but we also have Mayberries. And what we find is it's so important as our kids are going into the world that they have an understanding and a recognition and not only of themselves, but of different cultures. Sometimes out of our good heart and from our culture, something is considered polite or nice, but in another or nice, but in another culture, we could be very offensive. So understanding cultural proficiency and competence, cultural pre-competence, cultural blindness, culture incapacity, and cultural destructiveness, understanding those different components and using that in our day-to-day dealings with our parents, our communities, and then our students as they go into the world and are working in that worldwide society, they will understand, using their independent plans of study, they will have a better idea how they can communicate and learn and be a better influence in the world. It's also based like on Maslow's hierarchy of learning. First, kids must feel their safety and belonging. We all need that. Well, the classrooms needs that. Well, if you feel that safe and belong culturally, from your gender, whatever that is, then you are going to do a better job. The students will perform better, which is the ultimate goal, and educators will be able to perform their task in a more proficient and way.
So let's pull it all together. The two aspects that the T L I participants, the fellows are working with, they're engaging on two growth tracks. Their personal leadership competencies, those two that they wanted to show growth in, and also the problem of practice in the real world. It's kind of like an action research project that the fellows are going to be working on now. They took those two competencies, and now they're deciding which of those three pathways they wanted to choose. And what's going to come out of that is called their capstone. And we're already seeing some amazing information and work being done by our fellows. This briefly tells you what the capstone experience is. They're going to take their skills that they've been working on, those competencies, pull it all together. One of their assignments was to make a needs assessment, and from that needs assessment, that's their direction on how they're going to accomplish their capstone. Just real quick, I want to briefly tell you about one of the fellows that I'm working with. She's a special ed teacher, and she found the need for making parents and students feel comfortable during that I E P process. So her capstone, her project, is all about how to alleviate that stress and that tension when you walk in and you face a group of teachers and you hear that your child is not working up to expectations. So what a wonderful thing for her to be addressing already.
As we are transforming education in Kansas to meet the needs of the world, teachers in the classroom, in the trenches, they know what's going. They're seeing different problems. I know in the 30 years I've been in it, I see different issues today than I saw in the beginning, but I see some things very much the same. Parents loving and wanting the best for their students. In problem solving, even when teaching math in fifth grade, it was think, plan, solve, and look back. Well, the research model here is learn, design, do, and reflect. So we had our fellows gather essential background and knowledge, review and research about problem. Then they designed, they conducted a needs assessment, they surveyed, they did power mapping to develop a strategic plan of action in collaboration with key partners. Then the next, as you get in there and you do it, implement the strategic plan that you've tried, very similar to what we've been doing here in Kansas. And then you reflect. Through my National Board process, the one thing I've really realized is, those that can reflect on what's come before, add in what they know and the problem that they have for the future, great strides can be made. It is a reflective process, it's a blended learning, it's a flipped classroom, the things we're trying to do in our classrooms. So let's give the teachers some tools to be able to do that.
Since this is the first year for Kansas, and we're not in our capstone projects yet, I thought I'd share with you some of the capstone projects that have come out of other states. This is a sample of some of the instructional capstones, and from the titles, it might be difficult to see what they actually accomplished, but you can see some interesting capstones. and in the association.
You know, because you're the State Board of Education in Kansas, that Kansas is renowned for their practices. States look to us for our assessment process, for our teacher leadership, they look to us for our curriculum. T L I is no different. It started out of the National Education Association. They wanted to take the research, the knowledge, and make a difference on our education, support teachers with the ultimate goal of improving student learning. They have had, in the four years it's been in place, over 900 participants, 40 coaches, and 13 pilot sites. When Kansas found out that this was going on, we wanted to be a part. And so Linda, myself, Adalia, we got involved, and we have donated our time and dedicated our time to begin this in Kansas, to bring this, and hopefully move it further across the nation.
If we have time, I'd like to share with you, as a coach, my takeaway from this whole experience, besides meeting some wonderful people. I think I'm most impressed with the people in the T L I program and with the materials that were provided. We watch webinars, TED Talks, there's core readings that we participate in, and as Julie mentioned, it's a flipped classroom. Then we come to these Zoom webinars, and across the nation, I'm being able to speak with urban teachers in their fifth year of teaching, which I don't have any understanding of what problems they face. And I'm hearing about discipline issues or lack of administration support. And being a veteran teacher, if I can offer that teacher, that five-year teacher, just a glimpse of hope to maybe stay in this profession and to continue, the networking and the fellowship that we gain from those are just, I heard you talking about going to conferences and networking with people. We're allowing these five, eight-year teachers to network across the United States. It's very, very valuable.
My aha, as I said, of a Zoom meeting, talking with people from all over the United States, and I was a facilitator and a coach, and so I was there to help and guide questions. Sometimes you just don't realize when you've been in the trenches so long that you actually know a few things. You know, you're like, oh, my goodness. But as they were asking questions, we've dealt with that, done that, and I suggested something, it happened to be a music teacher with an issue, and myself, being a library media specialist for the last 20 years of my career, I could tell them, here's some things you could do and try. And they contacted me back, would you tell me more? Would you talk to me? And it took me back to, though I'm here today because of those who came before me. My grandfather was an educator in my hands, and I thought, you know, if I could leave a legacy, it would be to reach out. Like, I know, I get passionate, that if I could reach out and do that. I was sending class yesterday, and one of the kids, they were talking, Mrs. Doian, how that happened? And they said, it kind of sounds like Sully, you know that movie? And I said, yeah. And they said, well, how do you think that really worked? I said, well, you know what I think? You have youth and exuberance and excitement, and you're willing to step out and try new things. Those of us that have been in the world for a while, just like Sully, that day, he had knowledge, he had expertise, he had the thought that I'm taking care of these passengers for me, whoever's in the back of the bus or in the classroom. And he used that, even when the people that were out there, the people that were supposed to be directing him, when he didn't agree, he knew, and he stood up, and he was an advocate for himself and for those passengers. And that's why we're standing today. So today, as we've been involved with T L I, and we count to you, we want to be advocates for our profession. And this might be an opportunity, some of these things have been developed over several years with great research, very similar to what we're doing. Maybe it's something we could do farther across the state. We're going to have our next cohort group in the fall of 2018, and we hope to have even more than we have at this time. Thank you so much for letting us visit with you today and share something we're very passionate and we feel has made a difference in classrooms already. We stand for questions. If you have anything you'd like to ask us, we'd be more than willing to share a lot more. We love it. So, thank you.
Yes, I would love to talk more about it.
Well, it appears that you're going to get to. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so I'm assuming this group of people on the back of this list are your fellows, since it says 2017 fellows. So what is your hope with this group of people, once they're through this training? Is your hope that they'll go back and provide some training in their own schools or their own districts? What are you kind of hoping as far as this group of folks?
Well, I'd like to speak to that if I can. Our fellows are so, already so, so busy being leaders already, and as Julie mentioned, we're just kind of giving them that extra skill base, that extra help, and they're going to continue to be leaders in their district, at the state level, hopefully. Hopefully someday you'll see our fellows standing in front of you with new policy, new instructional practices. Yeah, that's what we're hoping for.
So then you'll have another cohort group?
Yes.
A 2018 fellows group?
Correct.
So your goal will be to continue this program as you build teacher leaders throughout the state, really?
Absolutely. From the research out of the Blue Ribbon Task Force and the research that has happened the last several years, we found that when new teachers, they feel part of, and then when teachers mentor, it gives them a sense of satisfaction, and they're more likely to stay in the profession. For example, my grandfather said to me, he was a teacher and then a principal for many years, before he retired, he wanted to be, go back to the classroom. And they said, well, why? And he said, that's what I love, that's why I'm here. And if we can keep these experienced, wonderful teachers in our classrooms even a few years longer, as we build our educational, it's going to help the education across the United States. And so we want to elevate the teacher voice, we want to give teachers the sense that they do have a power. We're redesigning education to meet the new changing world, and we want them to be part of it. They're the ones that deal with it day in and day out, and this is the way that it could happen.
And when you look at the teacher shortage, one of the things you see is the retention issues. So are these folks also getting some training and hopefully that they'll, and you know, informal mentoring sometimes is important or maybe more important than formal mentoring. So, I mean, are these folks, is that something that you hope that will?
Sure. When we were in DC during our training, our mentoring, we met several coaches from other states that were once fellows themselves. So maybe some of the fellows on the back of this page might be coaches later on. It would be wonderful, right now, that we're the only two coaches in the state of Kansas. If we have enough people interested, it'd be nice to have four, six, eight coaches, and they'll probably come from that list right there.
I mean, I can just see a real assist as far as the mentoring piece, which we, you know, you always need more help with that mentoring for our new folks.
And when we selected the folks, we really were cognizant of the fact, we want people from across the state so that they have, it's not just one place, that often Western Kansas, it's hard to get, we have vacancies we can't fill out there. So if we have some educators that could help and reach out and work in their buildings, work in the districts, work throughout, presenting at conferences, what have you, and they have the confidence that they really do have some skills and some extra additional training to work with adults, it's a win-win.
And I don't know if it's listed on your paper, but our fellows come from all different aspects of education. As I mentioned, we have some sped teachers, we have a special teachers, music, theater, we have kindergarten through high school level teachers, so it's a wide spectrum of teachers. And that networking, when they're able to get nationwide and Zoom and talk to teachers from other states, it's been priceless. It really has, that support.
Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to write this down so that my brain doesn't go into overdrive. Just want to make two points. One is as we improve the profession, which I think everybody in this room wants to improve the profession, I would sign up to be on that committee to improve the profession. I think we need to recognize that, just as all students are individuals, and we're pushing for the individualized plans of study, not all teachers are the same. Some need quite a bit of mentoring, some not so much. Some come to the table already as professionals in many, many ways, and others not very professional, and they need a lot of coaching. I think most people would agree with that. As we do this, I just want to say that we need more inductive logic versus deductive logic. And what that means is, instead of trying to decide before we sit down with somebody and see what the situation is, we decide this is how it's going to be, we just say, hey, let's see what we have first. And then we make decisions based on empirical evidence, data, observations, that sort of thing. One of my talking points is, respectively, and respectfully, as respectful as I can say, the teaching is not union work. And I say that because my dad was a union carpenter, and I defend the unions for building trades. But as a teacher, I just don't quite see it as union work, but it's definitely professional. So, again, my two points, not all teachers are the same, and we need to employ more inductive logic. Thank you.
When you talk of inductive logic, your explanation was the process, learn, design, do, and reflect. And so on that point, that's exciting to hear that, because that is a working model that transforms.
I think another powerful aspect of T L I is it's the autonomy. The teachers determine what they wanted to grow in, you know, what their strengths were already, and then the areas they wanted to grow in, and they get to determine their capstone, their area of need, where they want to see improvement. So to me, that's the power of the T L I program.
Janet Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm kind of getting up to just the structure of how this takes place and what happens. I'm assuming they come in for the training to Topeka, or do they do it outside? And also, I'm very aware that, for instance, our teachers oftentimes aren't able to participate in training that even we offer due to frankly, lack of funding from districts. I mean, it's not, districts want it, but they can't afford it. So I guess I just kind of want to know how this is handled and how, you know, that's what I'm interested in.
That's...
I mean, I'm very pleased with this, it sounds exciting, but I recognize the challenges.
It truly is. And our professional organization has said, what can we do to help teachers in the classroom and ultimately students? And so this process has been worked out, they have paid for our startup fees and that. The way that it works is we have a face-to-face, and early, we had it in February. So we get together, we've contacted, we've selected the participants. They like to start with approximately 30, and we got 20 in Kansas in our time, and so, but we felt we had good quality candidates who were passionate about it. Then the next step is, they are, it's basically a lot of online, because they are sent, it's called the Learning Management System, and they go into that, and then they will watch, like she said, TED Talks, there'll be professional readings, and they will learn something themselves independently. Then they have 90-minute seminars that they log on using Zooms, which is all free from their own home, wherever, or even their school. It's in the evenings and weekends, they usually have about, oh, 10, I'll say, times and dates that you could sign up for, different times, most convenient for you. So as a teacher, I can do it Sunday night, or I can do it, you know, in the middle of the week. I get on, and we discuss the homework that I had, that I did independently. You have the facilitators who have questions that are based on the activities. Then you have, we're the coaches, so we are also, and then we do breakout sessions, so if you have a large, you know, we might have 60 people on that night. So then we break into smaller sections where we might only be talking to eight to 10 people. So they can really ask their questions. Well, I was wondering about cultural competency, or I was wondering when they were talking about the new blended learning, dah, 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 dah. And so then you have experienced educators who have been trained, and they talk and try to work through these questions, and even other fellows join in. I've had this experience. It is, oh, my goodness, every night I get off and I can't go to sleep, because it's just powerful, you know, to listening to that. So there are four modules in the spring, so you have your face-to-face, four modules, and then we had a work session before summer, beginning summer, so they could just get together, because they work on it their time, there's no strict deadline. You know, we kind of give them, here, if you could have this done by approximately, but we know they're busy. Then they have the summer off, and they can finish up their four modules, and that was the first semester. Then we will have the second semester, they'll have four more modules, and there will be a culminating, more of a celebration at the end of that. We are also, we just sent an invitation to our fellows for a couple of work sessions, and we'll pay mileage for them to come, or we can, you know, talk to them over the phone. We do a lot of our things over the phone, email, whatever you need, Zoom, K N L will provide a Zoom for us, so if we need to talk to each other, or if we need to talk to them. So the candidates are not out any money, it's time, they are small stipend, we give them, and then they can earn micro credentials. We're trying in licensure, we've been talking that, we've been concerned about not having teachers in Kansas that are fully licensed and have gone through the programs, I understand. But we're also at a crossroads, we have positions that are not field, and so maybe we have someone out there that's been an accountant or what have you that can come in the classrooms. So micro credentials are starting in businesses across the United States, and so we said, well, how about in education? Maybe I can, I need, maybe I'm in Western Kansas, I can't get to a university closely and easily. Maybe I can earn a micro credential in technology or cultural competencies, what have you, and I'll be better trained, and I'll have that that eventually may be on a licensure here in Kansas. So we're trying to think down the road and solve the problem from within with low cost.
Right.
But quality professional development. But quality professional development.
You know, that's important, quality, but that was my concern because I recognize that's a challenge today with the funding cuts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Cabal.
She just answered my question.
Well, thank you very much. I wish you could try to be a little more enthusiastic.
I'll work on it.
She shows her passion very easily.
We have a late entry, Mr. Willard.
Hi Ken. Good to see you too.
Sounds like an exciting program. Who actually, where does the funding actually come from for the stipends and all that?
The National Education Association and Kansas National Educational Association. So NEA and KNE.
Is participation in any way limited?
No, the application, Adalia did a great job of going out and seeking out fellows, but the applications were available and they sent in their resume and we three went through those resumes and applications and found some very qualified fellows.
There are quite a few teachers that are not, I think, members of NEA, are they able to participate as well?
I'm going to turn that to Adalia.
We had one participant who has now been nominated as Teacher of the Year and Gilbert Seals was not a member when he was invited by a peer to participate and then he eagerly wanted to be a part of our association, so then he has joined. But it was not, it was not required.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. He's a pretty impressive guy.
Yes, he is. Fourth grade teacher, amazing, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna, thank you very much, but I want to change the subject and this is for you, Adalia.
Hit sir.
We're gonna, I know that we're gonna have other, other discussions about this later on, but can you give us about a two-minute update on educators rising?
Yes. Educators Rising, it's been a very busy week for me as well with educators rising. We're in the process of planning for the December 5 conference. This summer, we had a meeting with our teacher leaders. Kathy Bush was in attendance and helped us secure a location for our meeting. The teachers came together at Wichita State University and they basically, it was their first time for them to come together and network. They were sharing what they were doing, their curriculum. We had folks that had quite a bit of experience and some who were just looking at starting a new chapter for preparing students to go into teaching. So within that program, we then met afterwards and discussed a calendar for our upcoming year. This is our first year, I'm going to say it's a transition year, as last year you officially made that as a new CTSO for KSTE and we're still in the process of transitioning. Our teacher leaders are beginning to network. We've planned a schedule, we'll have our first conference at Mid-Nazarene, it's going to be November 1st, Nancy Dameron is hosting that. As a competition, students come in and present on a topic and it's a competition, they're judged. That prepares them to attend the national conference, which I also had the honor of attending this summer in Phoenix, Arizona. We had two groups of our students attend the national conference, a group from Gardner-Edgerton and a group from Blue Valley. We had a couple of our students place in the top 10 in the competitions that they competed in. So I was very proud of our students. The excitement to see students so eager to go into education is just very rewarding. We had a very diverse group of students as well. So then the second conference that we're looking to host at Emporia State University, been working with Dean Weaver to set that date for December 5th. And the K-Bore met last Thursday and they were discussing educators rising. I received a call from Todd Roberts, who has been helping me organize that conference. Kathy Maung had been very instrumental in the ongoing of bringing Ed Rising to Kansas. She has left the classroom and is full-time and anticipating that career change, she had looked to me to come onboard as a state coordinator. The teachers really are the ones leading the way with the work that they're doing. I am just there to support them and do what they can't do with their busy schedules in the classroom and their personal lives. So we are planning the December 5th, that's going to be a student leadership conference. The students will be presenting what they're learning, so students learning from, from themselves. Then we are planning a me, a third conference that will be at K-State and they will be hosting our spring competition where then again, seniors will have that, seniors particularly, I say, because they're the ones that will be their last opportunity to do a competition before they go off to college. And one of our students that did place in the top 10, she graduated, she was a senior and she still attended the national conference in June, even though she had already graduated and is now at Emporia State. But it's just an exciting program and I look for your support in helping us continue to promote that and grow it across the state. I would like to speak to more of our administrators who don't have programs to understand that they can access Perkin dollars to support beginning a program. There's a lot of support with the teacher network that we've developed. They have an advisory board, so they're doing the planning and working together to really elevate the teaching profession and promote it so we can grow our own teachers here in Kansas.
And there will be a representative at the, they will be involved in our CTSO issue when they meet with us in.
Correct.
In, I think it's January.
Yes, thank you. Any questions?
How is the, how is this being promoted throughout the state?
We're in the process through the United States. Educators Rising has its own website.
I mean, throughout Kansas.
And throughout Kansas, we're putting a website together so that we can have that specifically. Our teacher leaders want to feature the activities that they're doing.
Okay.
Some of them are doing blogs and just sharing what they do in their classes. So that's what we're developing. It'll be a link on our website and I hope on the KSTE website.
So, but it is, it is new. I mean, this is my first I've heard of it. Okay.
Yes. We had Kathy Maung was here last year and presented when we first received in November, the CTSO status.
I've forgotten, last year.
Okay, so we were here in November.
Okay.
And we'll continue to keep you updated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll have a board and committee reports. Legislative, anything update? Court hadn't met, so hadn't.
Happily, nothing to report.
Communications?
As part of an ongoing opportunity, we have some recommendations for just activities that you could be involved in at this time, just to, I guess, remind you, challenge you, ask you to do some of these things to, that are being distributed. You are not required to do any of these things, but we do ask that you consider doing them and as part of an effort to enhance communication. I met with a chamber group in Wichita last week and asked if any of they, them at the meeting would be interested in attending one of our board meetings. And the chairman of the committee said that he had been involved with education for many years at locally, but it wasn't until Kathy and I started attending the meetings that they had an awareness and an understanding, a better understanding, if not an introduction to the state board. We sometimes assume that, that our business people are aware of who we are and what we do and many times they are aware of who we are, but not always what we do. You know, and, and our plan, one of the things we talked about was engaging others. So I'm hoping that in, in future months, we might look out in the audience and see some business representatives from around the state who would be at our meeting for, you know, a couple of hours, whole day. If they are, we'd like to recognize them, you know, and encourage that. Just, it, just something else, you know, they looked at me like, why would I want to go to your meeting? Well, I'm at your meeting. You know, and, but several have, have expressed an interest in, in attending. But I would say that this is the time of year to communicate with legislators. They're busy, meeting with people. You know, so this is the time that you develop relationships and it's not in the heat of the battle that you develop those relationships typically, you know. So there are just some, some ideas to deal with. I am looking at working with our Clearwater Service Center to host a legislative forum get-together for, before the session begins. I'll be working with legislators and the locals boards to do that. Just another thing to do, get, get them together and get us, get the educators, the legislators and us together to, to visit and talk. Now, again, recommendations, just thoughts that you might want to do, you know, as you go along. Yes, and also October is Bring a Student to Work Month. You know, there, we have in this, themed here, some activities with students. You might not be able to bring them here, but meeting with a local teacher, future teachers organization or with local student council would be a, a good way to get them to understand our work and use that as a theme. You know, so something to think about. Anyway, and I have, we, we, we've been very, you've been very good and I want to thank you for the things that you've done to help bolster the image and the status of the state board in our communities across our state and certainly with our legislature. So, Dina, anything you'd like to add?
No, not at this time. My only comment would be that if we are communicating with legislators, if, we probably need to have perhaps a, a list of things that should be discussed, so.
And that's what we're working on next.
So we, and other than that.
That's one of our goals as well. Thank you, Dina. That's, we continue our work.
So that will be.
If you and I would stop traveling. Get the, our chair to stop traveling.
These, these suggestions I think are very good. I appreciate this.
Just thoughtfulness.
I would encourage all of us to do as much as possible to make sure that, that the vision gets, whenever I'm talking about the division, the vision someplace, people are very excited about that. So I think it's important for us to keep.
I really like what Denise and her staff have put together in these videos, these are, those are really good.
Yes.
You know, I don't have to be quite as sormon, I guess, like, you know, it explains it very well and, and it's quick, you know. So yes.
Thank you. So we need an extensive report of yesterday's policy meeting, Janet.
Our policy meeting was extremely short and we didn't have it. But we're planning on meeting next month. So we missed last month, this month, so three's a charm, we'll meet next month.
Are there any other committee reports?
I'd like to just, the Coalition of Innovative Districts has been, continues to meet and the coalition is asking some very good questions about where they are right now in terms of, and who they are, in terms of, in light of the redesign efforts that we're putting forth. And I, I do want to say that they were looking, they're working very hard to establish an identity and a, and a purpose as they go forward with this and we should be receiving a report from them in January or early in the year. And I would expect them to be coming to us with their vision of who they are now in light of the changing dynamics of, of school reform taking place under our new vision.
Are any of those districts?
McPherson is, yes, McPherson I believe is the only one of the, of the coalition school, districts that are part of the.
Redesign.
Right.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, Board Attorney's Report. So we appreciate your brevity. We're going to change the format here a little bit. Instead of me calling on everybody, if you're interested in giving an individual report or have a future item request, just sign up on the hand thing and I will, and those of you that don't, I will not call on you and I'll call on you in the order it comes up. We'll start with Sally.
Very much. I'm going to first talk about the, for, the, this thing that Jim handed out on suggestions. I think all of you know that Randy visited with the community college presidents this last week and I've had the opportunity to set up three meetings and I've asked the superintendents to make an appointment with their community college president in their town. And then I've gone and taken and shown that post-secondary and I'm not the best at explaining that, but by him following up, I've received some emails back thanking me for the visit and highlighting it for them because just like all of us, we get a lot of things coming across our desks. They knew there was something in the air about it, but they didn't have it maybe as highlighted for them to pay attention to as, as what. So I just want to tell you that if, it was, it was a good experience if I had the superintendent of the school call the president of the community college and make the appointment with me to go along. That worked out really well. And we, I've visited Barton, Seward County and Dodge. So I don't think I've made much of a difference by doing that, except maybe bringing to the attention the community colleges that we are watching and that post-secondary is important to us and that we really appreciate them helping us with kids to have some experience before they leave high school. And that we are doing things different and if they want to kind of step out of their comfort circle and try something with the high schools in their area, they appreciated that. So, what else? I went and did a Big Deal tour with the Big Deal for one day and he does such an awesome job and I got to ride in a new chariot and now he has changed that chariot, so I, I don't think he wants anybody to ride in my seat afterwards, I guess. Anyway, it was, it was a good tour and any of you that's gone with Randy on, on school visits, you know that it's, it's an awesome experience. Now, I love going to the superintendent council at Southwest Plains Regional Center, but the best part I like is the nine o'clock session in which the superintendents talk among themselves about what is working and what isn't. And they were asked two questions this last week. Who or what positions are you still looking for? Now, this was as of last Wednesday, a week ago. Bus drivers, teachers, Liberal is still needing 21, Garden City's still looking for 30, Dodge City's looking for 20. And that's teachers, that's not any other staff. Some of them are still looking for managerial type staff and we've got one school still looking for a school nurse. We, then they asked, what is your biggest hope for this school year? And one said, looking at individual kids is going to be their focus, that they haven't actually looked at kids as individuals and they were wanting to do that. They're hoping that they can get a smooth start on the KISA and that they understand it fully. And then they hope that Dr. Watson lasts as long as Dell Dennis. And they gave him quite a challenge. He was there at this superintendent's meeting and they, they really appreciate him coming. Stanton County or Johnson, and I, I have to be careful with that because it's not Johnson County, but it's Stanton County and the name of the town. but it's Stanton County and the name of the town is Johnson, gave a really good presentation on how they grow their own administrators to fill their gap. And I listened quietly to someone on the side that talked about how they grew their own school nurse, explaining that to another. And so, that was, that was kind of interesting to listen to. We've got all sorts of neat things going on. And then the last session that they do is on apps for your cell phones or your iPads. And I thought, Steve Roberts, I thought of you on this because you're kind of a techie guy. But there is a notebook called a Rocket Book. Now, I don't know if that's the name of the app, but you've got to realize there's something out there with Rocket Book in it. And you get this notebook and you have a special pen. Do you know about this? Are you using that notebook? Oh, okay, but you write in this book, you do your hand notes in this book. It will then go and divide itself into these folders. Like, if we had the, if you just had a folder that had the five outcomes, the notes that you took would take and go into those, organize it into those five notebooks for you. Because I don't know about you, but I'm always taking these notes and then, but where do I put them? You know, and it organizes it for you. When the notebook is full, you take it, you dump it in this water, it cleans the notebook off, and you have the notebook to go again. And it is, well, Ken, I thought about you and how many different boards you serve on. What about if that, that thing organized it into your different boards?
That'd be really nice.
Yeah.
My tablet in the, in the water.
Well, anyway, but this is a, it's a notebook. So, when you go on Google Rocket Book, and you ought to know what, it'll bring up what I'm talking about. Because I don't have the correct name of the app. Because, of course, I was taking notes and I couldn't read my writing. So, but then there was another, another app that they had this guy from Texas come up. And it's called the Teacher Drawer. And I know that's right because I went on teacherdrawer.com. But our teachers or we that serve on nonprofit groups, you know how often we have to post what all we would like for our room? Well, individual schools are doing this. Teachers post and then the parents can go on and they see what needs to be purchased and they purchase it for the teacher. But they're setting up a Houston Relief Drawer. And so, as these teachers go back in at Houston and they know they will be, there will be a drawer for that, the company is, for supplies for Houston. But I thought, gee, I think of all of the different groups I'm on that ask for donations. If they would do this drawer, and then they put a link to amazon.com or jet.com or whatever. And so, you go in and you pick that out and then you can buy it from Amazon and they ship it to the teacher. So, you don't give anybody money. You don't have to, to ship it. It's just done for you. Now, you guys might have known all about that, but I did not and I found it fascinating. I'm through.
Thank you. My understanding is that there's an app coming where when you travel to a foreign country and the signs are not in English, you can just point the app at the sign and it'll read it for you.
Oh, Jen, you might need that. You better.
And my wife and I are going to Rome in two weeks. We've never been. Anyway, I'll try to make this brief. The first talking point is about the talking points from March that I gave you in laminated form. Chairman Porter and I are going to talk about that briefly and try to get something a little more cogent that we can use. As liaison to the Kansas State School for the Blind, I feel like I'm remiss. There's a local situation with a Blue Valley student. They've had sort of a tug of war over who's going to pay for books. I'm actually going to sit down with one of the TV stations and talk about it. I've already allowed that it's not a state board issue. It's a local issue, but they want to hear from me anyway. I'll be teaching math for the next two weeks at Lawrence Free State. I actually taught there on Monday and it was terrific. I had pre-calculus. They were actually interested in what I had to say. It was a beautiful thing. I was in my element. I'm convinced I made the right decision at age 17 to eventually retire to a classroom. So, that's still my plan. The travel to Nashville to the Foundation for Excellence in Education will be at the end of November. And so, before I sign up for NASB, I want to make sure that there's enough in the pot to do that with travel and salary. I want to say a couple of words about Ken's words to me yesterday. We had lunch together. I feel privileged to know this man, this Navy man. My father was a Navy man and the priest who married my wife and me was a Navy chaplain. And I've been calling a time when Father Ron LaHoyevich, 1960 graduate from Bishop Ward High School in KCK, when I was talking about working on these issues, long before I was ever on the board. He said, well, you just jump through the hoops. That's what you do. You just jump through the hoops. And Ken said something very similar to me yesterday. You know, you jump through the hoops. That's what you do. You jump through the hoops. If you want to be a teacher, you just, you do what you have to do. And so, I'll probably end up doing that. But before I absolutely have to, I'm only going to jump through what I absolutely have to to be a voice for changing the system, if that makes sense. I hope that makes sense. And the Blue Valley Education Foundation had a wonderful breakfast. I was privileged to see our commissioner in his finest form, if I may say. He was on the dais with Superintendent Todd White. And they were interviewed by a gentleman from KCPT, the public television station there in Kansas City. And the last thing I have is a reminder that I would like to help with the school bus video. If I could work up some language or talking points for a school bus video, if it would be appropriate to be part of, you know, that collection of seven or eight-minute videos, I'd be more than happy to do whatever I can do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a personal interest in Harvey and Irma. I happen to have family in both states. I have a lot of family in the Houston area particularly. So, anyway, I contacted Randy after this all happened, when it was, after it came down, to see if there was any way we as a state could do something. I don't know what. You know, I mean, there ought to be something we as a state could do. So, Randy said, well, he, I asked him, am I nuts? And he said, no, I really wasn't nuts, which was nice to know. And he said he would check. So, anyway, apparently they did check with NASB. You know, Peggy gave me some information this morning. And Texas and Florida are neither one members of NASB. So, therefore, they contacted the Texas Education Authority. And their board's meeting today as well, believe it or not. Peggy talked with their board secretary also. In the Houston district alone, I just want you to hear this information. It's just mind-boggling. 200 schools have been impacted, 60 substantially. In the coastal areas, some schools were basically wiped out. And anyway, also, the governor, another point I wanted to make was the governor said that his disaster declaration encompasses 58 counties and more than 1 million students attend Texas public schools in these counties. We, we're waiting to reach out to Florida. They, like, I don't even think they're through, you know, rescuing people. But anyway, I don't know what we can do as a state, you know, just encourage our schools or something. But I don't know what it would be, but I would hope that we, because everybody's worried about, you know, doing, taking care of families and stuff, and certainly that's top priority. But, you know, these kids have to go to school. And I know that, for instance, I have family members in the northern part of Houston. And my one cousin told me that Kingwood High School, which is in Humble, will not open this year. The high school. You know, and you're not talking, you're talking, I know Latham School District is what you're talking. This, this school is probably 3,000 kids at least, you know. So, I don't know what they're going to do. I mean, that's just mind-boggling to me. So, anyway, I don't know what we can do, but hopefully we can, you know, do something. You know, so anyway, that's what I wanted to bring up. And then, secondly, as a future agenda item, this is a different subject. I, I don't know whether you all got this email or not, but I've received a couple of emails from this individual regarding youth voting. And whether all of you have received it or not. But anyway, there's a concern. Apparently, according to the data he furnished, Kansas ranks very, very low on youth voters in the nation. And apparently, I thought, at least when I was on the local board, we were registering kids to vote in the high school. You know, we had it offered there. But it's my understanding not all schools do that. So, and also, are we, in our, in our history government classes, are we making presentations on the value and importance of voting? The value of, you know, researching an election, knowing how to, you know, find a good candidate or, you know, what you should do and how important this is? So, I guess I'm just asking, I'd like to have a report, if I could, on, to get some information on this. Because I think this is very concerning if our young people are not voting. I think this is, and it starts, that's what we're, one of our goals are. So, anyway, I would like that as a future agenda item. Thank you.
I want to add to what Jim said about the Coalition. They are going to be having a work session at their next meeting. And hopefully, there will be some, some direction that they find for themselves to go in from that particular meeting. And I had the opportunity not to ride with, in any special seats or anything.
I'm sorry.
I drove to Solomon and to Washington County and listened to the presentations that, that Randy gave. And just from things that were said to me after, I know how much they appreciated him being there and taking the time to come and share personally with them what our vision is in his exuberant style that really inspires many, I think. And I would like to thank all of you during a tough time for me. I was just blown away when, at the visitation, Jim and Randy and Kathy were there. And that meant a lot, a lot. And then my dear friend, well, and I have to say that Steve came in later. And to know that he drove all that way really meant a great deal as well. Because my mom lived in, which wasn't too far away from Wichita, but it certainly is from Kansas City. And then also, at the funeral to, to have. Now, my.
It's okay.
My name's escaping me. I need to see the front.
It's okay.
To have you all either send cards or personally say something means a lot. And of course, I'd had surgery just before all of this took place too. So, that added to the difficulty in a lot of ways. And thank you, Peggy, for sending a beautiful, beautiful mom. It is huge and I can't even get my arms around it. And it reminded me of all of you and the huge hearts that you fork for students. So, thank you.
Thank you for reports. Seeing none other, we'll move on to the chairman's report. We've had a request to have her serve on the Social Emotional Character Development Standards that are being formed. And I have asked Janet to fill that position and she has accepted. I understand, Ken, you're not available for the Teacher of the Year this year and have, we appreciate the past.
Thank you. I'm sorry I can't.
And Dina has agreed to be the person that handles that for this year. And we appreciate your willingness to do that, Dina. So, Dina is appointed for that position. Mind everybody at the NASB conference, I need to ask those of you considering, the information packet about what's left in our budget is for the rest of the fiscal year through June the 30th. So, please be aware of, of the budget. You know, we're not, we don't shoot you or anything if you don't, if you go over, but you need to be aware of that. There are new regulations if you're traveling out of state. This is, I think, a state thing where there's additional paperwork that has to be done. So, if you are traveling out of state, especially to this convention or anything else, I think it took about three weeks for me to get my paperwork done for. For, for, so be sure and get with Peggy to make sure that, that paperwork is done appropriately so that that travel can be approved. I was privileged to go to about five of the KCK tours and found, first of all, each one of them was different. But in some cases, each one of them the same. The importance of the SB 155 came up at every one of them and how that's making a difference. And we talked about some, it appears that the closer you are to a major university, the less vacancies you have, which makes sense. But, so, so some areas, we don't have any vacancies, you know. And some areas, we've got a bunch of vacancies depending on, on your proximity there. So, so it's, it's, there is a geographical element in that supply and demand thing. I went to, Monday of this week, I was asked to speak at a Skills USA Regional. It was in, and I talked about 70 kids that were involved in those processes. And what I talked about was the importance of not just having your technical skills, but also those employability skills that were, because that's what I was asked to talk about. And that's what I did talk about and how important it was to do that. And I found that to be, it was a very receptive audience. And I stole liberally from some of the presentations that Randy does. I just unabashedly went in and stole a bunch of stuff. And so, I appreciate your effort. And I was also able to attend a meeting with Randy, sitting in Sally's chair, I guess, where we met with all of, with the. where we met with all of, with the community college presidents and boards. And this was in Eldorado. I sat next to Janet Shaver, who is the chairman of the board, I think, at Independence Community College. And of course, Randy always does an outstanding job, he did that time. And there was a great deal of excitement, again, a great deal of excitement about our direction. And I will be unavailable for the next week and a half because if you need me, sorry. Nobody ever needs me, but if you do, I'm going to be in Iceland and will be back in about a week and a half.
We're sorry.
And I have nothing else. Board reports and future agenda items. So seeing nothing else here, the next item of business is...
Sure. The item that I've mentioned a couple of times would be a great agenda item, I think, on the language.
Availability of language.
Right.
Yes. You have that down. So, the next item of business is travel. Kathy?
I've talked to Peggy about this, but I'm going to add on September 27th, the KASB regional meeting in Hayesville. And then Peggy, I also need mileage on the 21st for the teacher vacancy. No, actually, it's the mental health because that's up here, teacher vacancy.
They cover your mileage for that, the mental health.
They do?
The school mental health, they'll cover your mileage on that.
Okay, I'll have to turn it into them then, okay.
The paperwork you talked about for traveling out of state is new to me.
It is new.
How do I access it?
Just through Peggy? Yeah, Peggy.
Okay.
I think you'll take care of it already.
If I'm going out of state, well, if I'm getting salary, I guess I have to do it. All the other expenses are paid.
Not salary, it's just if you need approval for out-of-state travel, if we're paying for expenses and airfare and hotel. But if it's salary, I don't...
If I go to something that all that's covered, I don't have to, okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to add, on September 25th, the Juvenile Justice Oversight Committee in Topeka. Mileage? Huh, pardon me?
Date.
July 20, July, September 25th. I said July, didn't I? I'm really thinking I'm late for my meeting. Okay. And then October 12th and 13th, the KASB conference, actually, I'll be going down the 11th, but I'm going to spend two nights. So I want salary and per diem for, I guess, two days in mileage.
And your Juvenile Justice Oversight, is that in Topeka?
That's in Topeka, yes.
The Teacher of the Year for Deana is going to be the 20th of October. Sally?
Quick question to Kathy. Kathy, is our September TV essay here or at the conference? It's a Zoom, okay. We have, I have a meeting on the 21st, so that's just salary. I hope I make it home for this. Okay. Thank you.
I noticed that Coalition of Innovative Districts is at the location in Salina, and it's really, unless they've changed it again, it's Topeka. It's at KASB.
Yeah, I don't know if we need, are you doing things out to November? Because I'm going to go to the Teacher of the Year banquet down in Wichita. That's okay. And then Jim and I just set up a deal to go to West Franklin School Board on November 8th.
Glad you mentioned that because I'd forgotten about it. I forgot about it, we talked about it 15 minutes ago.
West Franklin School Board, November 8th.
So he's not in Iceland.
And I'm also going to Teacher of the Year.
Not in November.
When is that?
Anything else?
Yeah, I know.
I plan to...
Not a motion to be in order to pay for the travel. Sally, Jim, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Seeing no other business, we are adjourned October the 17th at 10 o'clock.